Hi, my name is Jeff Trust. I'm a transportation analyst. Many years with the MBTA in Boston and other, as far as way as San Diego, okay? We all realize that you're facing a sort of a transit crisis here in Rhode Island. Your biggest enemy is traffic right now in providing consistent reliable scheduling, okay? So what do you need to do? We have to look, some of these cuts here will further reduce ridership and especially concerned with the, the schedule, like how can you remember 85 minutes or 40 minutes or 32 minutes? Easy to remember every hour on the hour, every hour and a half, every 20 minutes, every 15 minutes in some sort of a format that you can remember off the top of your head to, to help you to realize when, when the bus is coming unless you have, you know, the smartphone and could look it up. The other thing you have to, beyond this crisis, which is legitimate, you have to look at what can we do in advance? Well, I'd start looking at integrating commuter rail with bus service. For example, Providence to Wickford Junction route. I think that as a future plan should be extended to Westerly with maybe another stop or two, East Greenwich and also Quonset, Quonset Point. And then you'd be able to reduce the amount of buses, but they wouldn't be stuck in gridlock traffic and they would be feeding the train. And also to have one, one joint fare, a bus rail pass like they do in Boston where you can take the commuter rail and transfer to, if you have to, take another bus to go from A to B, that type of thing. And then look at maybe as they have to consolidate some of these routes, maybe look at the total system and simplify, simplifying the whole operation to make it more user friendly. And we, we realize that everyone, most everyone has a car now. So the form of demand of bringing people from, to downtown Providence, from their homes in Greater Providence, that's, that's in the past. We've got to look to the future of what the demand is now. And the only way is to utilize bus and rail together and also a possibility of a commuter boat, say from Bristol, maybe Barrington if the facility exists, to downtown Providence. And new innovations and new ideas because the waiters out there now, traffic will eventually come to a complete standstill and none of us will be able to get anywhere. So thank you for your time.
I don't really have much knowledge as to like what to do to like solve these problems, but I do have to say as someone who's autistic and as a result, my anxiety is heightened by that. It's been a process for a really long time to actually get to driving. So I pretty much rely on Ripta to get me to and back from work. I work in Riverside, I mean, I work in East Providence, so I take the Riverside bus. And then I take the 60 Barrington to all my appointments. So this is negatively going to impact a lot of people who really like rely on the bus service. I'm not sure what to do in a situation like this, but I just want to get my voice heard. And I'm thinking of everyone who's attending like Rhode Island College, C.C.R.I. with these like reduced services that could cause more scheduling issues and, you know, imagine if you come to the bus stop and your bus arrived at the bus terminal late and now you have to wait like an additional like 40 minutes instead of like the 30 or so that you were supposed to wait and you might end up being late to class or work or, I don't have much else to say, but thank you.
Thank you. My name's Mark Dirksen and I'm going to be commenting on the Title VI review for service changes based on the 61X, which originates in Tiverton at Fish Road Park and Ride and terminates at Kennedy Plaza. And they talked about eliminating two of those, four. It runs four times each morning and four times at night. The proposal is to take away two and I'd like to know or have my voice heard of which two is going to get canceled. And my proposal is in the morning, the, they have four that leave, but only three leave Fish Road or Tiverton and one leaves from the Convention Center in Providence. You can cancel the one that go in opposite of the other three in the morning and night. So yeah, I guess you would consider in the morning, it would be the inbound and at the night it would be the outbound. And if you're going to cancel another one of the 61Xs, if you could make it the first one that leaves Fish Road, Tiverton in the morning. So it'd be the very first outbound in the morning and the very first inbound at night leaving the Convention Center. So I hope that makes sense to, if not, because it's kind of confusing with one leaving opposite because I, yeah, but that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jesslyn Jarist, I live in Bristol. And I'm really disappointed that all, I mean, as many people are. I grew up riding the bus as a kid, getting into Providence from Cranston, and it was something that really helped to bring a sense of accomplishment to me as a kid. And I'm really sad to see these kinds of cuts happening across the state. I think public transit is incredibly important to everybody here regardless of whether or not you use it. Traffic is only getting worse. I prefer to use the bus if I can, which isn't always possible for my job, but it's something that I do try to do, trying to teach my kids how to use the bus. We came, moved here from the metro Boston area. My son was able to use the T from the age of five. He took his grandparents around to the Science Museum at five years old because he knew how to take it because we did that all the time. I think if more people normalized public transit, we'd be in a much better place. And these cuts are not going to do that and that's really disappointing to me. I'm also really scared or not scared, I'm nervous about the safety aspect. If we go down to 60 minute wait in Kennedy Plaza, I'm really concerned about that because I've taken the bus at night and it, it's not well lit, especially where the bus stop that I get on is. So I'd like to know, I was actually hoping that there was more information about the cuts, not just you reading what they are. I was hoping that there would have been more feedback on why, specific metrics as to, you know, the background of what was happening. And I'm just disappointed, sorry, disappointed that that wasn't here today. I understand that, you know, there's only so much time and this is the last meeting, but you know, this is going to affect so many people in this state and it's only going to get worse. The traffic situation is terrible. So thank you.
Hi, I wrote something and I've been thinking about this for a while and so I'm just going to read it. "Access to public transit, transportation is a vital component of any community, town, city, or state. Taking away that access adversely affects people, their ability to get to their jobs, to medical appointments, and to be able to live without their own vehicle. It limits the amount of cars on the road, helping to curb emissions and better our climate. I find it abhorrent that the state's government and administration is so quick to cut a public service without any insight into first how to make it more effective, efficient, and accessible. Take Barrington for example, where I live. The two routes that run through this town only run on the main road. You still need a car or bike for, you still need a car or bike from any residents to even get to a stop as they live more than a mile away. I am sure it is the same in other communities. If riders have trouble getting to the bus stops, how are they to ride the buses? The real reasons for the aforementioned low ridership are related to infrastructure and lack of access and should be looked at first before any cuts are enacted. How many state officials take Ripta to work, to an appointment, to the beach? For some Rhode Islanders, this is the only way they are able to get around our state. It is confusing to me that our governor can easily propose salary increases for his cabinet but fail to direct the appropriate type of study to figure out how we can best support this vital infrastructure and generate more revenue for it. Ripta, the 60 and 61X and their route flexibility saved me and my family when the bridge shutdown was at its height. I do not know if we could have functioned without it. Many people in this state cannot function without it and will not be able to live and support themselves or their families without this vital access to public transportation." Thank you.
Good evening. I'm actually Senator Pam Loire, I represent Barrington, a good part of Riverside and part of Bristol. I want you to know that I am devastated by these cuts. I argued for and voted for adding additional money to the Ripta budget on the floor of the Senate. And I will continue to advocate that we keep Ripta and actually add more money to Ripta. Obviously, there are many people for which they have no other options for transportation, but that's not the only reason to fund Ripta. We have much too much traffic on the roads. I travel across that bridge every day and know what that's like. We need to have less traffic on the roads. We're trying to bring affordable housing into our municipalities and without adequate public transportation, that becomes near impossible or extremely difficult. We are, as a state, trying to reduce our greenhouse emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. How do we make those goals if we're making it so that people have to have a car to get around? Public transportation was never intended to be a money-making or even money-neutral proposition any more than public education or public health is. This is a priority and should be a priority of our state and we all need to keep fighting for it. I thank you all for being here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Leslie and I also wrote something in advance, but I'm a mom of two and I'm a member of EPIC, which is a grassroots organization, East Providence, called East Providence Community. I got involved because I care about building a better Rhode Island, not continuing to watch the erosion of services that generations previous to me fought really hard to create and protect. More than 40,000 Rhode Islanders use Ripta to get to work, school, medical appointments, and vital services. These cuts would disconnect people from their basic opportunities and result in job losses, not just for transit workers, but for anyone who suddenly can't get where they need to go, including after looking at this, a large amount of students, disenfranchised communities. I see these routes every day and I see people waiting at the bus stop. And I really agree with previous comments about the way to increase ridership is not to cut the routes because then people will not have the way to get there. As a parent, I also think about the future. Cutting transit undermines our climate goals, delays training for healthcare workers, and leaves students stranded. It weakens the very systems we claim to be strengthening: housing, education, the economy, and equity, and traffic. Because I also live in East Providence and so the bridge does affect me as well. And I was going to take the bus here today, but unfortunately, it would have been an hour and a half and I would have been late. So I think, again, more routes would mean more access for a lot of people, including myself. And let's be real, there are no true alternatives for many riders. Uber vouchers are not going to cut it. People are going to be stranded. Some communities will be completely cut off. Ripta doesn't need more cuts, it needs more real investments. Otherwise, we're not just harming public transit, we're holding the entire state back. So I appreciate the time and I really hope that the board will not take the cuts. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Pimental and I live in Riverside. I'm here today to stand against the proposed service cuts to the transportation system. When I was much younger, I relied on the bus services to take courses at a community college. My ability to get to school at a young age when I didn't own a car was foundational in building my knowledge base to allow me to succeed in my current career in surveying. There are many students in this state that are enrolled in higher education and do not own a car, either for financial reasons or because of a disability. These students, many of whom worked very hard to obtain scholarships, are being asked to sacrifice their futures because of the proposed cuts being discussed here tonight. Often, funding cuts are justified by low ridership. Using this argument to slash funding for essential public services creates a cyclical problem in our society where less funding creates less frequency of service, which creates lower ridership. And lower ridership leads to less funding. The only solution to this is to change the narrative on public transit. We must start to view bus services as an investment and not a drain. And I would like to remind everyone that a budget is a set of priorities and our most vulnerable in our society are being deprioritized.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ari and when I was living in Hopkinton, Rhode Island, I had to take the 95X all the way to Providence every single day just to get to school. And if it gets cut, there's a lot of people down there that have no other options. It's so rural, you know, it's hard for them to get on a train. It's even harder for them to get on the bus. Like I had trouble, I had to go miles just to get to the bus. And even now that I'm living in Barrington, I rely on the bus every single day and I worry about people who might not be able to take the bus at night and, you know, if the delays get worse, if there's more time between each bus, like what's going to happen to people when it gets colder out, you know? These cuts are happening during the beginning of the school year when more students are going to have to take the bus every day. And it's just, it's really baffling, you know? I don't know. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Derek Trombley. I'm a councilman for Warren. It's a beautiful little community that we have and happy to be here to speak tonight. I don't take Ripta, but many of my constituents do. And they take it for a variety of reasons. Sometimes they use it to get to school, to work, to hospital appointments, to any number of different economic ventures. And our small businesses, especially in our downtown, rely on customers coming through various means of transit. And if you've ever been to Warren, one of the biggest problems that we face is the problem of too limited parking in our downtown area. And this adds to that. It adds to congestion for traffic, especially with the Rip, not Ripta, excuse me, the Washington Bridge saga, which is going to be prolonged period of gridlock and traffic problems for people that live in the East Bay, traveling into Providence for work like myself. Cutting public transit means that more people are going to have to turn to cars, which means you have more congestion, which leads into fewer people. It's a vicious cycle, a downward spiral. We disinvest in Ripta and then it turns into a problem where fewer people ride Ripta and then we justify more cuts on Ripta and so on and so forth until basically there's no reason to have public transit in our state. But there is a reason because it's good. It's an economic stimulus. It's for people who truly and desperately need it, but it's also something so necessary for our climate because we have ambitious climate goals to reduce carbon emissions and the biggest, one of the biggest sources of climate emissions is transportation, gasoline, cars. Take those off the road by convincing people that could take a car to take public transit instead. It's so much better, but it's, we're cutting two of the three pillars: cost, reliability, and frequency. Frequency and reliability are getting cut right out by these cuts and people will turn away from them. And then the last and most important one in my eye is housing. Housing costs are through the roof, as we all know, and we have been working, many in municipal, state, and even at the federal level, on transit-oriented development whereby you have greater density because you don't have the need for a car because people will take public transit. So when you cut public transit but push transit-oriented development, it's going to lead to failure. And I don't see how we can reach our housing goals, our climate goals, and just our economic goals as a society and as a, as a state. And I know that my constituents are going to be really hard hit by this, even though I won't be personally impacted to the greatest extent. I just want to make it clear that although perhaps what I say here won't have any impact on the decision that gets made tomorrow, that these cuts are draconian, they're wrong for Rhode Island, and we need to do better. Thank you.
My name is Megan Collier-Tessier and I live in Riverside, Rhode Island. So I'm here on behalf of my husband because he was actually taking the bus from Newport, from work, right now. He directly takes the Route 60 every morning. He wakes up at 5:30 because I just put the schedule back and it's an hour and a half. The hour and a half that he travels to work as a federal employee saves us $400 a year on car insurance, not to mention another $90 a week on gas because it'll be a hundred-mile round trip. I have travel palsy. I have lived in many different states and I've always relied on, I don't know what you hold in Rhode Island, I think it's dial-a-ride. And dial-a-ride is essentially like door-to-door transit. If you can't take the fixed route buses, you take dial-a-ride. Dial-a-ride, you call up two days in advance and they fit you in a schedule for the day. So if you have a doctor's appointment, let's say it's at 1:00 P.M., they have to get you there by 1:00 P.M. They might pick you up at 8:00 A.M. so that you're on time. So you have to be, you have to be at your doctor for six hours just to make it there. Buses also provide reduced fares for people on disability and SSI. Buses also maintain the environment and cutting a route that is the only access into Newport so I can, again, use our only vehicle is unconscionable. There is no other direct access to Newport and because services in Newport, unless you live there and work there and everything, there is more, there are more services and more access in other places in the state, so you're going to live farther away from Newport. So we need, so we need to invest in Ripta and we need, we need to invest in these crucial routes. Because even if it's not profitable, people with disabilities matter. Our black and brown communities matter. Why do they get forsaken just because other communities want profit or they want to feel better? Black and brown people are never profitable. People with disabilities are not profitable, but we matter. And we all need to be here. And we all need to stand up for these cuts and Ripta cannot make these cuts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Turbit. I'm a resident of East Providence and I participate in EPIC community activity. I took the bus when I was in college going to U.R.I. I took it all the way from Providence, all the way to Kingston, and eventually I was able to get an automobile and I drove to C.C.R.I. Warwick, left the car there and took the bus to get all the way down to Kingston. It saved me a lot of gas mileage and I really appreciate how it saves me the gas mileage. And right now, I, as you can see, I just came out into work. I'm a little bit tired and disheveled. The Route 6 bus is getting cut on the weekends and I am just thinking that'll be a detriment to all the workers who work at the zoo on the weekends because obviously they can't get to work. That means there'll be less people. And of course, this goes on right when school comes back in session. So this will be very bad for zoo employers and very bad for other employers that are impacted by the weekend service cuts because there's more customers out shopping and also there's more activity on the weekends, especially once school's open. And I don't think this will be a great thing. And I really hope Ripta changes its mind in the future and eventually adds more routes, especially inter-town routes, because I don't really see the point in going to Providence when you just want to get to Warwick or Cranston or any other part of the state. Thank you and have a good night.
I think one of my first experiences with Ripta was when I had a sick relative in another state and I had to fly there or my husband had to fly there every weekend in order to take care of that sick relative. But being on 95 South in the metropolitan area, I was cut off many times and this didn't make me feel comfortable driving on 95. So I turned to Ripta to get me to the airport every other week and my husband, the other week said I wasn't available. I feel safe on Kennedy Plaza during the day. Nothing as ever bad has happened. If anything, people have been polite to me by holding open doors and doing things like There are several routes that I take. Route 1 takes me to Rhode Island Hospital where I had outpatient surgery and I had to see the doctor. So, and he was at Rhode Island Hospital. Route 1 also takes me to the airport. Not to fly though. Because of the rotary situation and the bridge situation, I don't feel comfortable driving, so I turned to Ripta. And my friends from college, who I've known for more than 50 years, and I meet on a monthly basis in the restaurant across from the airport where they graciously pick me up and the three or four of us to go over to the restaurant. And this is very important because one of my doctors really pushes socialization, being with other people. And these people are very important to me because I've known them for more than 50 years. We have a lot in common. I also socialize with, in other ways too. It's not just them, but they're very important. If the airport part of Route 1 were to be cut out, the Elmwood Avenue Bus 20 does go to the airport. So I would hope that if one was cut out, the other one would still be available, 20. Buses 32, 33, and 34 I need because when Ripta drops me off at the bus tunnel, I need them to get me through to the east side where I get medical care there. I just don't get medical care at Rhode Island Hospital or locally from my PCP and my dermatologist and people like that. Bus 60 will be taking me to Newport Hospital where I will be seeing a specialist at the end of this month. And also going back to Rhode Island Hospital, I know I mentioned what did happen. At the end of September, I have an appointment at Rhode Island Hospital with a surgeon to discuss what's going to be happening to straighten out my elderly body. I appreciate, oh, please don't, please don't discriminate against some people because of social and economic reasons. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alice Fisher. I live in Barrington and I would like to just reiterate a lot of what people have said already. Colored transportation should be seen as a service just like education and the goal should not necessarily be to make profit, but just to exist and help people live their everyday lives. Cutting a bus due to low ridership will not help anyone. It will just make it be even less riders and make it even harder to sustain these programs. I know I, myself, and I benefit from these buses as well as many other people that I know. I'm interning in Providence right now and as a student, I don't have my own car, so I often rely on the 60 and R buses to get to my internship. At my internship, we are providing free English classes to the refugee community and many of these people need the bus in order to get to classes, in order to learn English, which will substantially improve their quality of life. Even these delays of just five minutes, it adds up. And this can potentially result in many people losing access to resources they need. I know even before these cuts, there are multiple students who have told me they don't come to class in July because it is too hot to wait at the bus stop and they fear getting heat stroke from waiting for what the current duration is for a bus. This five minutes would add up even more and even more people would lose the transportation they need in order to get services they would greatly benefit from. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tyrese Colbert. I live, I'm a Newport resident. I just came from actually work and I saw people downtown Providence and Kennedy Plaza right now, like literally fighting for what we doing right now. So it's like, it's crazy how everything comes together, right? I've been trying to come out here for the longest, trying to go, and they had one in Newport on the 29th of July, but I didn't make it. So I was like, ah, I'm not going to make it, I'm not going to make it. But I know today's the last day, but I have to make my point of course. Like I appreciate everybody coming out here fighting because that's what we supposed to do. Fight for things that we supposed to care about. And the 68 is getting cut. I live by the 68 line, so I'm kind of upset behind that. It goes to DHS, a lot of people go to DHS for a lot of things. So I don't know what's going on there, but I hope they don't cut that. The 14, the weekends is getting cut off, I don't know why, it's getting eliminated. They just brung the 14 weekends back and now we getting cut. And I depend on the 14. Sometimes the 60, I don't know how the 60 is going to move and operate, but there's so much going on at once. But I go to Newport Hospital. Also, I'm a single father of three, so sometimes I take the bus to take the 63 to 60, you know? A lot of bus drivers know who I am because they know I'm like a local passenger, like taking different buses to get to work or anything that I need to get done. And I appreciate that. I'm from New York City, I'm not from here, but when I lived here 10 years ago, it definitely was a pleasure for me just to rely on Ripta because it saved my life in so many-- for me just to rely on Ripta, because it saved my life in so many ways. Even, I had my ups and downs, but I appreciate Ripta for what it does for me, for my kids. Sometimes we go to take the fourteen to Jamestown Library to the community park, take them there on the weekends, and that was cut. So it's like, I don't know what else to say behind it, but everybody has a story, and I'm proud of each and everybody that's out here fighting. And I hope that this will make a change for people out there like me and y'all to keep fighting, because, you know, we still have time, and you never know what can happen. And I always tell people, be the recipe to your own masterpiece. No one can be you but you. No one can steal your formula unless you let them. Get them, you know, give them a little bit, but no one can be who you are unless you allow them to take your formula. But I hope you all have a wonderful day.
Okay. Hi, my name is Joseph Bong, and I wanted to say, to compare two things. Public transit is like riding an elevator. It's the safest thing you can do besides driving a car. It is. Elevators are, have like, a lot of safety features. Public transit, you have the operators that are designed to be safe. Now, by cutting public transit, it's like you're doing the complete opposite. It's like you're going backwards to, it's going backwards, you're creating more accidents on the road, putting more cars on the road. That's what it is. And I have another, and I can share one story that a woman that I know of, it's a different case, who is studying at Brown University, and her mother, or, or, and her mother took the Seventy-eight, she, to our church, she had to walk fifteen minutes. The bus didn't came. And by cutting it, you're gonna, and she had to take, take an expensive Uber to take from one place to another. And I could share many, many more cases, including one case where the, where if, where another friend's uncle, which is, who's from Indonesia, take, he'll sometime, he'll sometimes take the bus to the post office in Post Road, but if you're going to cut service, he has to walk even more. Like, that's going to be devastating. And another case will be her niece, will be his niece. She'll also take the Thirty-three, and, and, and she'll work her way up to Johnson-Wayles University. But by eliminating that, people are going to be, these people, they're going to be stranded every single day. And another case to note is, we also have another case in our church, is that who will take the Seventy-two, Seventy-three. Cutting that, reducing frequency on that, you're going to make her, her life, her life a lot worse than ever before. She didn't have, she doesn't have a car. She can drive, but she doesn't have a car, as of yet. So these are all the stories I could share. Thank you, guys, and I really, really do appreciate for all of you guys being here. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Libby Merrill, and I'm a resident of East Providence, Rhode Island, and I'm actually representing a group called East Providence and Community, too. And I will talk about my experience with the bus. There are some places you go in the world where they tout their fantastic public transportation, and it's a point of pride. And for some reason, here, we like to fund the bare minimum of public transportation, and we like to cater around cars. We're about to spend, I don't even remember the figure, but as many million, like, a ton of money on, to replace the Washington Bridge, and none of that money, that's, that money seems to be flowing to Rideot to replace the Washington Bridge, and yet supposedly, there's no money for public transit. And that's unacceptable. Of course, some people don't have cars, but also, cars create a lot of the thing that makes our cities feel unlivable. In East Providence, people complain all the time about how we're overpopulated. Our population has gone down ten percent since nineteen eighty, and we, it feels overpopulated because there are too many cars on the road. It's not the people, it's the cars. We need desperately, in this state, we need better public transit. At the very bare minimum, we should be funding Ripta with what they're asking for. We should not be cutting services. My husband, making an effort to take the bus rather than adding another car to the road, attempted for a year to commute to Canton on the commuter rail by taking the bus down Pataca Avenue, East Providence, and then walking to the Providence train station. And the bus, that was a bus that currently supposedly runs about every sixty minutes or every forty minutes. It's going to get scaled back to every eighty minutes, I believe. And he would regularly miss his train, because the bus was, had either come ten minutes ahead of its scheduled time, or had come, you know, came a half an hour late. So already, the service is not as reliable as we need it to be, and yet, Ripta is one of the most efficient systems we have, and the efficiency study they did showed that they are incredibly efficient. They use their money incredibly efficiently. We need the service to be better. We need to be funding it higher. We should not be not at least funding what they're asking for. And that's all.
Hi, my name is Pauline Cooper. I'm originally from Newport, and I am going to college in Providence right now. I'm going to keep this brief, because I have a lot of repeats of what everyone else has said. I am also a college student with no car currently, and I have used the Ripta to make my world bigger. If I could only go to places that I could get a ride from someone else or walk to, my square area is, what, about five miles? Ripta has expanded that to this entire state. I have gone to classes, I have gone to community college classes in high school from the bus, while both of my parents are using cars to go to work. I have gone to the zoo, I have gone to the library, I have gone to the clay studio. I have gone to countless places because of Ripta. And with these budget cuts and these service cuts, that would not have been possible. This is a service that expands people's worlds, and as many, many people have stated, the problem is that these services are not reliable or frequent enough, and the solution is not cuts. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Aiden Fers. I'm living in Providence, but I grew up in Tiverton. Buses for me as a teenager really meant freedom. I didn't have access to a car. My parents had cars, but they, you know, used them for their jobs. So not having many friends in Tiverton, I would take the bus to Newport, or take the bus to Portsmouth, Bristol, like, wherever I needed to go, wherever my friends were, I could go there. I got a job because of the Sixty, and later the Sixty-one X. And I know that there are other teenagers like I was, who need the buses to grow as a person, so I want to speak up for kids who are not here. Buses are freedom. I also just wanted to say, because I know someone asked earlier, why are these cuts being proposed? There are no efficiency metrics that support these cuts. It's purely budget cuts. This is the second hearing I've been to, and I learned that at the first hearing. I was frustrated. There's a mural in Providence right now, I don't know if anybody else has seen it, it's on Westminster Street. It says, "Before we think, before we build a second Washington Bridge, let's connect Providence to Newport by rail." And I know that's a very lofty dream, but let's at least think about it. While we're building this second bridge, can we think of ways to actually reduce the traffic that we're all experiencing? With the Sixty, with the Sixty being cut, it's being cut basically in half from at least what it used to be. I don't know what it is right now. From every, like, even if it's every thirty minutes, if you're somewhere like Middletown or Portsmouth, where the bus is split between the east and west main, that's actually going to be every hour. Or if the bus is every hour, it's actually going to be every two hours, if you're in one of those spots or trying to go to one of those spots. And that makes it a lot harder for people on these split parts to actually use the bus to cut down on traffic. Now, people who might, you know, maybe they missed their bus, they need to get somewhere, are going to ask for a ride. They're going to get an Uber. That's going to put more cars into the traffic that we're all waiting in right now. So I have two last comments. I want to speak directly to any state representatives that might be listening, that if there's anything they, or just any who haven't already thought about this issue in ways that it might affect them. Have you ever waited sixty to eighty minutes for a bus? Have you ever taken a bus that connected, and your bus was five minutes late, and you were supposed to, like, get right onto the next bus, and now you have to wait an hour? These, these changes are devastating. And then, lastly, like, a small proposal for Ripta. I saw the Sixty-eight potentially being cut, but that bus, from what I understand, in the summer, runs without a fare. You know, this bus service seems incredibly essential. As someone said earlier, it can go to DHS, it can get people the services they need, and then it also has leisure value. It can take people to the beach. Is there a way to add a fare to maybe save this route? Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.